Thursday night is the number one. We see. Oh, wow. Yeah, that's where we were playing. I've been there a lot.
Well, you didn't get a judge to replace him. Play the back. Well, get those out of there. See, it's like a foundation.
Just thought. All of our operations.
Oh.
All right, guys.
Yeah. 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 There's a bunch of hands around that foundation. Okay. And they have three classes. Make wishes to people. Uh, racers should get hurt, so.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Okay. We got. Right. Really? On Sunday. I said. I'm. This will start. And then Friday morning, they have our second. That is. That is. This is a JBC. It's a huge terminal. It's just amazing. My Bulls. That's the technical section. Oh, it's. Get around. They had, well, we had scout day yesterday and or Wednesday. And they had track minutes that absolutely get to exit the rock. Watching all this. They have all the scouts.
Well, I.
Speaking about.
I have to go to.
If they're part, like it's home volunteer. Because what happens if you're a market? So they don't. So we'll have. We're recruiting. That's how. We have. You know, that feels. Now, uh. There's a lot of, there's a lot of these.
Just talk for.
Yeah. They'll have a, they'll have a scout looking for them. And they'll say, hey, why don't you call this guy?
Right, right. Yeah, that's good.
It's all about that. Yeah. 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 There's a lot of, there's a lot of these.
Just talk for.
Yeah. Yeah. They'll have a, they'll have a scout looking for them. And they'll say, hey, why don't you call this guy?
Right, right. Yeah, that's good.
It's all about that. Yeah. 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 There's a lot of, there's a lot of these.
Just talk for.
Yeah. Yeah. They'll have a, they'll have a scout looking for them. And they'll say, hey, why don't you call this guy?
Right, right. Yeah, that's good.
It's all about that. Yeah. 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 Call the town council June twenty twenty one meeting to order. Bull silent, please. I do allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Marissa Gag.
Here.
Jane Davis.
Here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Jeff F.
Here.
The six hundred approval of minutes for the May thirteenth reading. All of these copies, any questions or comments? Go direct. I've got a motion to approve in a second. Go options.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Marissa Gag.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Jeff F.
Hi.
Mister Cruz. I'm trying to report, please.
I won't. Okay, you all see here, the general funds is in real good shape for this time of year. We had quite a few expenses. I think you've all seen some re-registered. Spent quite a bit of money. Paid our bills, about a million two hundred thousand, be exact. Things are up a little bit. We, I think we've got about fifty four boys now with the summer help on, golf course and pool. We've got quite a few new people. And the news looks great, though.
I'll make a motion except for. I've got a motion to second to approve the court.
Bob Jones.
Hi.
Marissa Gag.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Denny. Jeff F.
Hi.
For proof. Give me who want to. Sure. You don't have to read the report.
Sure.
All read. That's great.
Present by numbers, obviously, you've got the numbers for, for May. Nothing's changed. Chris wanted me to let you know that the drone is in service that we purchased. And we've got three people that are licensed to operate it, and it's been used twice so far. So really, Chris has nothing else that he want me to bring up in front of you guys? Short, sweet, good point. You guys have something for me?
For Jim, I stand like, I'm just, I'm all.
That's fine. Correct.
When we look, and I like comparing them with up month year to year. And I'm just looking at runs to fire department.
Yeah, that's, that's no aim. Well, it's not.
Right, this is just. Am I? January of twenty twenty, there was twenty six. January of twenty twenty one is fifty one. February of twenty twenty is thirty nine. February of twenty one is fifty eight. March of twenty twenty, twenty nine. March of twenty twenty one, sixty eight. April is thirty eight. April of twenty twenty one is forty six. May is twenty nine. May of this year is fifty eight. So the trend, I guess what I want to say is. Goes back to, we've been talking about quite a bit on runs. Just the fire department runs, not the handles. Other holder court. But the numbers are almost doubled every month. Yeah, I know last year was COVID. Still looking at two, two point four runs per day for the fire department.
I figured that. We just did the eight hundred, right around eight hundred and twenty, twenty five right now for this year. That's fire and aim. So that's your today. That's both fire and aiming. Eight hundred and twenty some runs.
Any other questions or comments?
One quick one concerning the fire territory. Karen has sent out bills to Eagles and Green Township, oh, Green Township. Are we doing anything at Eagles as far as talking to their people, see if they won't be involved with us?
And so far as I know, Chris and Sonny have been down there, talked to their department. I don't know about whether, I know they've gone to the town council meetings, but I don't know if they've had any input from the citizens. I, that's, that's Chris and.
Sure.
That's a Chris question. All with.
All right. Thank you. You know, the public. See you. Any leads?
Can't leave. He's on your.
Yeah. He's got to go.
Yeah. Real quick for the police department, seven hundred and two different incidents ran through dispatch throughout the month. It's nice to hear about the drones. We're probably using those at some point, unfortunately. Captain Sidwell has announced July ninth as his leaving date. He's breaking up with me on Friday, July ninth. And he's been my captain now going on fourteen years almost, and a twenty five year veteran of law enforcement here in Southern Mass. So he'll be great in this. I have four people that have applied for his position, so I'll be dealing with that over the next few weeks. And then I've also received some applications about the empty spot that'll occur because of that. So word's already getting out, people are showing interest. So that's a good. Qualified firearms was last month. Everybody did great rifle and pistol. We'll do shotgun later in the year. Now that the COVID's starting the less than restrictions, we've been reached out, Solid Rock Church up in Huntsville, Wes has come up there for a, they had a big community event. And so those phone calls are starting to occur more and more. And if you'd like to be here, like the years. I think tomorrow on it, or Saturday on the education station with Elsie. So you get to hang out for a little bit. Which I met him and his wife the other night, great people, just moved to town about a year ago. Again, because of COVID, didn't even know they were in town, so we had a great little chit chat. That is about it. I did include in my reported picture a bunch of alcohol seized in the park, busting up a little party in the park. And kind of find out, I guess those individuals actually came out of Anderson. So why they chose Pendleton, the party, I don't know. It's a nice park. It's twenty four hours and all. But Officer Trailer was on duty and those, so made a few arrests out of that.
That's it. Question, you should have, I think, three applicants.
I currently have three applicants for the full time patrol spot that will open in the city.
But do you have applications for? Sidwell's.
Captain's spot? Yes, I have four individuals in the department currently. But I put out a letter, hey, we're almost leaving. I need to know if anybody in house is interested in it. And I got four. So they've supplied me letters of intent, some resumes and stuff like that. It's a, I always watch the news and, you know, when you see a big department where an officer shot or something, and the chief just stands there, rattles off, these guys all, they're my family. And so it's a hard decision. But it's part of the job, and I've got good guys. I could make them all captain. Years ago, Edgewood Police, not to pick on Edgewood, but when I first started here, they had four assistant chiefs. So I think probably it was a small department that everybody wanted to be buddies, and that happens. But it would definitely be the best person to the job. And like I said, I got some good jobs.
So you've got four people in the house that apply for it?
Yes, sir.
And they all know you.
And they all know they are going to work with me every day. Yes. I'm amazed at it. And I tried to get it to Connie, but she didn't want it.
Smart lady.
Yeah. Any other comments? Thanks, Chief. Judge Gus.
What can I, what can I tell you?
Say something.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good. As far as, no, the biggest thing is the highlights, if anything, as far as, it looks like Ingalls is coming on because of Edgewood. We're picking up a lot more infractions from them. Also, recently, we've been informed that our program that was developed over a period of time for probable cause is going to be replaced by a new world system, which in turn affects, because we had a service agreement with several different courts. And there's going to be something like nine thousand, over nine thousand dollars that we were able to receive from service contracts with them that will be next year no longer in our income status. So we're working with them right now to make sure that there isn't any type of problems, because this could be a new shift for all the officers in the street as to what they do and how they do it. This could be handled by the Madison County IT group. We're just providing a, the cutoff date and also a methodology for them to retrieve anything that's been done prior to their cutoff date. So they'll have it for a record.
Questions or comments for the judge? Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
Our board.
Not me. Okay, I promised I'd let you know that there's going to be new business, music encounters out at one Plaza Drive. So I was going to come in next month to talk about it. I promised, I least promised them that I would say something. Go to the next page. But we had a new employee, Brady Fisher. He is what Ricky likes, somebody that's a mechanic, who is a mechanic, and it was an aviation mechanic. The army worked on CH forty sevens, which is a wimpy version of where I used to fly. Next slide. And I will remind him of that.
We already told him that, okay? But the comment I'd like to make is the last two town. Boys, I think. Yeah. Are, are veterans. And that's one of the good things I think we ought to be good if we can. It just, it's worked out well. These two guys that we hired in the street department, two young guys, know they need to work, want to work, and are willing to work. It makes a big, big difference of their own video. They're good guys. I just want to say that.
Yeah. They were, they were, they gave the letter, not because they were.
Right.
They were on their own merit. And, you know, that saves a lot of money for guys. A lot of turnaround. Got a lot of. So the major activities, we finished the tree planting, which the guys will tell you was a lot more intense than you would think. Water Street, we continue to hit more bedrock than anticipated. And then we've got an issue, you're going to see an airpark in the street for a few more days than we thought, where they start turning the east and coming down and running down Water Street. But we'll get past it. Franklin Street, we had the bid opening, I'll talk about that in a little bit. That's different business. And then the guardian tracking software, which is the employee evaluation software that we're going to use, which our council president wanted everybody to, to go to some sort of evaluation system. So that's about ready to kick off. Next slide, please. So billing department is, if you don't know, you can now pay your, with a credit card payment or recurring capability, bills, which should be pretty popular.
What's out of charge? Is it a charge? Do the, the first question will be.
There's still. Because I was like.
Yeah. Thank you. Right. So, yes. It was test.
Yeah, it worked.
Basically. Our guys did a great job on the flash flood we had. We had two inches of forty five minutes, it's three inch of outer rain, which is incredible. Our guys are so good, they went to do this every time, too. Even though they were knee high in water, they could walk right to where that land was, make sure they arose. They were, the good news is they were flowing. It was just so much rain, the capacity of our current pipes. Like departments put a whole bunch of different actions, as you can see from the planning report. And then I think the, the water department did a real good job reacting, reacting to flash flood and helping out the street department. But they had a well pump fire the other day on the park. I think they did a really good job of getting that under control. And it's not going to cost us that much to repair it. A good job, they did a good job getting this good. Start working on that.
I thought that could be covered under the COVID one to get to.
Oh, yes.
That's good. That's all I have, except for that other business that's coming out.
No questions for stop? Next stop.
Yep.
New business. One of the twenty one day fourteen updated labor charges, surcharge.
So all that is, is two corrections. We weren't sure that a surcharge is for consultants, sub consultants. It was clear that should be a fifty percent charge. Then there was hourly rate error on one of the, for lineman, and that was corrected. So technically, almost call it a technical corrections. Nothing, it's a substance.
Questions, comments? Motion for order twenty one day fourteen.
Second.
Motion. Second.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Marissa Gag.
Hi.
Bob Jones.
Hi.
Jeff F.
Hi.
First name is. Please.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and do the second reading.
I'll second that. I've got a motion to.
Bob Jones.
Hi.
Marissa Gag.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Jeff F.
Hi.
Now, I've got a motion to second. Motion for second, for second reading. Twenty one day fourteen.
Marissa Gag.
Hi.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Jeff F.
Hi.
Next new business is reconstruction project four there.
So we had the bid opening this week, and really good news, it came in at the engineer's estimate at one point four seven million. That was Calumet. I've worked with them before, so has Manning, so we feel very comfortable about the quality, so we recommend that the town council accept this. One point four seven, one million four hundred seventy four thousand. One hundred, one point four seven four.
Any questions on this?
Eighteen, eighteen twenty thousand of that is coming across.
This is Franklin Street.
Just Franklin Street, and then repaving state from main to the county bridge and, and replacing the storm line that runs down state. And we're also going to repay the mill, except now it really needed that diverse traffic down there.
And this will have side walk to Franklin Street on Franklin Street.
Yeah, right. It's a total reconstruction.
Here's the paperwork. You've got, yeah, after you pass it, we'll just have checks. Okay. I guess we're just voting to have the president sign.
You're accepting the bid.
The council approved it. Right. Question. Right. Yeah. Scott, are you good with the bid?
I, I, just before, I walked out there, out here with a, we're going to open the bids with the engineer, and I could tell, it's a horror story right now, because the lack of supplies, bids are going to be thirty percent higher, fifty percent higher. How's your, so you can't, we're having to cancel it. Go back to the drawing board, and I just, we walked out, I just looked at what we're going to do with this. Came out here to write the engineer's bids, or the engineer's estimate. So we just, it must have been just a perfect fit for Calumet on our schedule, and they slipped it in. That way.
No clauses in there for price increases.
Yeah. They have standard language in there. Save the little bit of twenty years ago, twenty years from now. Force retro type stuff.
Any other questions or comments? Can I have a motion? I'm good for approval of bid.
Second.
Motion second to approve reconstruction project bid for Franklin Street.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Marissa Gag.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Jeff F.
Hi.
Next item of new business is US thirty six project, who will contract the CDM Smith.
Okay, so as you know, US thirty six, we call it sixty, stay road sixty seven here. It's going to be reconstructed and add travel lengths as it goes through. They're allowing us for safety, pedestrian, safety, add sidewalk trails, and some medians, and also lighting. So this is to take us all the way, basically, to final design. It's still an eighty twenty split at this point for design. Funding for construction is still up in the air. We don't have it yet. So worst case scenario, if we did everything, if we built everything that we're having designed, it would be three point five million with the, hopefully an eighty twenty split. If that federal funding doesn't come through, we'll only do portions of it. And at risk, use that term, it's common terminology. If there was no federal fund for an eighty point six, twenty split, we would cut back to about a half million dollars worth of work that the town would be responsible for. Now, the reason I think it's worth taking going forward with this is because the right, Endop will purchase the right of ways for the trails and the sidewalks. If we pull out, that doesn't happen. If we get nervous that there's not going to be any federal monies. So just the fact that there will be the right of way for us, anticipation of building the trails and sidewalks, whenever that funding finally does come through, it could be three years from now, five years from now. Do you get that scenario, at least we've got the right of way for this. So that is financially to our advantage to move forward.
If we don't do something, we lose all.
We will have to do something, and that, what that something is, would be some median between the two intersections, and that would be half a million dollars.
Questions or comments? Do you agree with your own thought process or think bench? End up by that one, they look, we get the sidewalk. At this point, time, when will we know the federal budget? What's the time range on all this?
Well, the construction, we'll have to make some hard decisions by the end of July this year. Destruction's twenty twenty three. We're also anticipating, just from experience of this project, probably going to have one or two years in length. Give us more opportunities for that. The MPO is working very hard to find some additional funds. The eighty percent of this for design is actually coming out of the MPO. Not, not. They have a huge stake in this, too. And we're talking back and forth all the time, because they've invested in it more than we have. They, they feel if it. They, they feel that, that it probably will get delayed, just like I do, if it doesn't, I think we're fine if that happens. The trouble is, the thing, you know, we're, we have to, we can't be timid about this, because there's not gonna be a reconstruction like this for thirty years. And by then, the town of Pendleton will be forty, not forty-five hundred like we are now, will be forty thousand. If we don't have the stuff in place on sixty-seven, it will be a bottom neck.
You're on now. No forty, more than forty thousand. Yeah.
Now, this is not gonna do.
Scott and I have talked about this, when he said it to me, I kind of got down back to the office. But you were all, that's, that's what we, that's good. Numbers. They think that to us. Studies were done on impact fees and so forth, so the other number, we're, we're growing.
Now, Scott, was this a part of the deal with the school system, too, that we talked about? You know, they've always wanted to put a bridge over, but you mentioned about a tunnel.
Yeah, we, so part of the study that we did initially, we looked at the tunnel, the tunnel would be around a million dollars. We went before the, like, pass informally with the school board members, and they just didn't, they didn't seem to have an interest in it. A, a bridge would, over that, over that area would be roughly five million. Plus, it would have to be so high, you know, not make the skyline.
There's something we could, like, go back to the school system again, and, you know, show them the numbers, like, this is what it's gonna cost if we don't do it now. Because it's always been a hotbed of topic with all the kids.
I mean, I remember, I graduated in seventy-eight, I remember as a little kid in the school of Bill out there, that was, that was a hot issue. It was made it for decades, and then all of a sudden, for some reason, it just doesn't seem to have the swing.
They all got cars, Scott. I own properties out there, and I've seen walk across, there is a half a dozen kids that they walk across through there, it feels, a lot of the track teams come across. They do a lot of.
But you know, part of this, is if we, if we did construct everything we had, lighting, that's pedestrian safety and I, but these medians provide a sanctuary, or if you start to cross, it's gonna be four lanes down, remember this would be wired. So kids misescalate the light, at least they got a sanctuary in the middle, in that raised median where they can well, that's the technical term for it, and then, and then the median, especially grass median, slows down traffic. You don't have the suicide, we won't have the suicide lane anymore between the two intersections. Kids are prospering.
Well, they didn't elaborate on the concerns or about trouble.
About what?
About trouble there.
Some of the comments were security. That was mostly what it was.
Any cap, that's.
Million dollars.
Cap accessible. Bridge, that heaven help it.
Yeah, that's why it had to be so high to get over four lanes, and have a ramp that would allow handicap access. The ramp would not have been a problem for the time. We would have to start, I think, if I remembered right, three or four back. So it was a gradual enough that, you know, somebody in a wheelchair would be difficult to, going down. And that median is, is important back to, to intersections, too. We'll continue to allow what can turn. It'll just happen, since our population gets higher. So I know this busiest spot has.
We've got a tunnel up there. We, a lot of focus we have on the bicycle, pretty much, we spend a lot of money on that, upstairs west. Tunnel would enhance that point east. Big bicycle brand.
The tunnel?
Yeah, maybe, you know, design is such that, yeah, probably all to spend a lot of money on sidewalks out here on thirty-six, and then hit the front school that package field, making it, that's the game, bicycle.
Would the push button still be there? Yeah, they'll have that. Okay, so, so bikes are supposed to follow state law as a car would. So the tunnel, they would have to be off their bike and walk it. I mean, I, I don't want any kid hit by a car, but I'm anti-bridge and anti-tunnel. And my only reason is, unless you can cause a build a wall to funnel every pedestrian to that thing, that's the only way it's gonna be worth that amount of money, because you have a push button right there, and the half a dozen don't cross there. So, and even if there's a, if there's a ladder going up to, to a bridge, am I gonna walk up a flight of stairs when I can just beat feet if I'm a kid?
There are four kids cross there at Madison Avenue, it's road, track, and there is none through there. You know, that's something that.
And the joggers, they go to the thing and push the button and sit there.
Right.
And then go. I don't know the joggers you're talking about, I say, oh, thank goodness, red light. I'm calling them the high school, the gazelles, I call them the gazelles.
Any other comments or questions?
Not have a motion to approve the contract with CD Smith. This is strictly design statements, right, the town.
Next. Second.
Motion in second for US thirty-six project.
Steve Denny. Shane Davis.
Hi.
Marissa Gag.
Hi.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Chip Fad.
Hi.
Old business. Public comments? Anybody? Anybody online?
No, no.
Scott. This sheet that Caleb people put out, very helpful, I like that.
The numbers are phenomenal.
Oh, yeah. Especially with building projects, what's going on, yeah, very helpful.
No other comments?
Names of your.